You've got to be on the second.
Yeah, I'm done. For now. Okay.
All right, this regular meeting of the Lou Ray Town Council will now come to order. Would you please stand and join me for a moment of silence? Let's council with Pettit.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, endless, and eternal.
Danielle, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mayor Dofmire.
Here.
Mr. Vickers?
Here.
Ms. Lillard?
Here.
Mr. White?
Here.
Mr. Pettit?
Here.
Mr. Sowers?
Here.
Mr. Webb?
Here.
Okay, do we have any additions to or deletions from the agenda? All right, hearing on the consent agenda?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the filing consent agenda, the minutes of the regular council meeting of April the 10th, 2023, the minutes of the regular work session, April 25th, 2023, the accounts payable totaling $375,996.18, and the financials for period ending 4/30/2023.
Was that a question?
Yeah, 373,997.
Discussion?
Chief's questioned the total. I got accounts payable of $373,996.18. Is that correct? Okay.
All right. Second.
Any discussion? Danielle?
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Okay, general citizen comments, we have the Stanley Volunteer Fire Department and Boy Scout Troop 100. Always a pleasure to see you all, thank you for being here.
Mr. Mayor, Town Council, thank you guys for letting us come speak. We are looking to see if we can get dates set for next year's fishing tournament now because we have some big corporations that need everything in by June of this year in order to sponsor the trout tournament for next year. So if we could get those dates locked in, we could get these guys rolling with their sponsorships and get them back to us, and we can cover it that way.
So you have dates to give us tonight, sir?
We know that y'all wait till first of the year till y'all set y'all's dates, but y'all usually stay ahead of us at the end of March 1st of April, the 27th of April or May the 4th of 2024.
Steve, you have a note of that, and I guess we'll pass it on to Jen, and you all can discuss that and see if we have any conflicts with our schedule, but we'll certainly work with you all.
Again, thanking each and every one of you, we went from 251 entries last year to 327 this year. Just name a few, we have Danville, Arlington, had an older lady from Virginia Beach, we had a couple out of West Virginia, we had them out of Pennsylvania, we've had them all over the state, so I'm sure someone's staying the night here close by or in town, we don't know, but again, thank each and every one of you.
So it's a bigger money fundraiser for you, correct?
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Well, unfortunately, trout keep going up, we spent $9,000 just in trout. So it's...
They don't get caught?
No. We put in between $1,250 to $1,400, we know was checked in roughly $350,000, and we guessing $50 to $100 it wasn't bought to check in, so over half of them was more or less still left.
Were they trout or salmon?
Trout.
The biggest one we know come out is 7.3 pounds.
Really? They look big.
Yes.
They did look, were they bigger this year, they looked a lot bigger than they were?
We added a few extra.
I noticed some of the other people were there Sunday, Monday, Tuesday trying, and they're still...
Everybody has. Mayor, if anyone else was there, I know the mayor was, he can see from the Green Party parking ride up to the Main Street Bridge, the amount of sponsors we had by the signs, we lost some, but we gained some, but like I said, as he was telling you, the corporations need to have it in months ahead, and hopefully we can get some funds from them guys too.
We'll get back to you all, and thank you all, and you all do a great job every year cleaning up, we never, you all just do a good job.
We try to leave it better than we got it, sir. Boy Scouts went, and I was behind with golf cart, if anything was left, it was after we left.
Thank you all, and thank you, there's a small gift for the council, not a small gift, there's a nice gift for the council that we will break into later.
Don't enjoy it.
Your MC there on the microphone, very entertaining, I saw some of that.
Try to keep them now, who do it?
We had a gentleman from Abingdon come all the way up to Spom and sponsored us.
Really?
Abingdon, Virginia, he came up and sponsored the thing as well as, it was really nice.
Nice event, glad the weather turned out, it looked a little sort of...
Oh, yeah, excellent stream.
Perfect day almost.
Really nice.
The rain before really helped bring the stream up, so it was, it was good.
It's good.
Yes, all right, thank you, thank you guys.
Thank you, fellas.
All right, no one else has signed up, anyone else, anybody else want to speak? Daughters of the Stars Farmers Market?
I apologize in advance that the papers are all flipped, so it's not like reverse siding, I know that's always frustrating, but our printer was definitely malfunctioned. But thank you guys for having me here again today, this time on the agenda. Daughter of the Stars was looking really just to partner as much as possible with the town of Lou Ray, so whatever that might entail, we just kind of want to kind of advance everyone's efforts forward as much as possible, both in terms of, as we've mentioned, like the funding for the market manager position, but we had also like just input as how we can help with the town as well, so if there's anything that we can advertise at the booth or within our marketing efforts, please let us know. The proposition in front of you is a request for $5,000 for the market manager position from June to November of this upcoming year. Historically, the market manager position has been volunteer-based, however, the volunteer is no longer able to do that, as they'll be just a little preoccupied with field works at that time, but they are able to train, they as and I am able to train the rising market manager. Yeah, and just here to answer any of the questions that you guys might have.
Council?
Same old question, what did Shenandoah do, that town?
So...
Have they funded you yet?
Yes, they gave us funding last year for things such as, we have a food-grade market scale that all the vendors can use, and that's certified through the Virginia Department of Agriculture, and tomorrow is their town council meeting, they've been pushing through the past couple months trying to fund, funding, it just kind of depends on where that pot is coming from, it seems hopeful for tomorrow. Historically, there have been some funds that have come through tourism money, as it helps just attract people that are staying here to want to come back, as it brings this community, just really the feeling of community, as everybody is coming together, and it shows like what the community is growing, what the community is doing, and so...
I'm sorry, Steve, is this streaming on Facebook, because I'm getting messages that it's not, I'm sorry.
Remind me of the whole picture here, so there's only a farmer's market in each town, each location, and you're looking for a manager that's paid position to keep everything moving, is that the way it is?
Correct, so last year we started at the Shenandoah location at Big Gem Park, and this year we are staying there as well as expanding to Lou Ray. Very long-term, we hope to have a location in each part of the county, so Stanley as well, but right now, we're in Shenandoah and Lou Ray.
You have a location in Lou Ray picked out?
Yes, we'll be outside the visitor's center, like the chamber building.
Can remember that.
And who will be meeting that?
So it'll be the same market manager, so we are a nonprofit organization, I'm the president, there's Vanessa, who will be coming in later as the secretary, and there is also treasurer Denise Jenkins, and so the three of us kind of oversee the operations, but we need a market manager that can continue to come to each of the dates, so the first and third Saturdays of the month.
See, there was a farmer's market here for a long time that went away, and part of it was because it wasn't local produce, I mean, what's y'all's deal?
Yes, we are definitely staying local, we have it kind of at about a 50-mile or less gap, really, most people are from Lou Ray, and then there are some from Shenandoah, the farthest is from Elkton at the moment, we have 15 vendors, in Lou Ray, there are 13 signed up for most days, and yeah, so that's, especially as produce starts coming in, very consistent, so June 15th.
Well, I'm sorry I mean to miss it, but you said you have one pledge already?
One pledge.
One pledge of support?
Last year, we had some support.
Okay, so right now, you're still looking for the whole 5,000, okay.
Correct. And so, moving forward after this one season, there are USDA grants that do have matching requirements, so anything that's historically been given or volunteered, so any of the volunteer work for market manager is considered an in-kind donation, and so it can match into a grant that can sustain the position in the future, so they have minimum of $50,000 for those grants, and with the work that I was able to do last year, it equals about $13,000 of volunteer work, and so any other contributions, whether it be monetary or volunteer basis, that all contributes towards matching.
I know when you were here the last meeting, I inquired about what the county's decision was, so is there any, has there been any news?
Yes, there's not been any news in terms of the market manager position, but there are other things that we will need funding for, and so those we'll start more, I don't want to say aggressively, but just more, go more towards the EDA.
I don't remember what it looked like, would this be like pickup trucks in parking spaces with the trunks open, where we have booths, or what's it going to look like?
So it'll look different between Shenandoah and Lou Ray, in Lou Ray, there, it'll be outside that visitor's center, so it'll be, the parking that's available right now for visitors will be regular parking, the brick area will have tents and tables, those will be weighted down as it's a legal requirement, and then...
So people will bring their produce in under tent and sell it?
Yes.
How long will they be open?
It'll be open from 10 to 2, so there will be an hour for setup beforehand, and then up to an hour for takedown afterwards.
I see that y'all are able to accept people's like SNAP benefits, like food stamps, and then the Virginia equivalent of that, is this a position that's pretty essential to administering that part of it, I imagine that's a lot of paperwork?
Yes, it's more a lot of, yes, paperwork, but documentation in the moment of who is receiving what benefits, and then who are they giving their benefits to, so making sure that the vendors that are accepting those SNAP benefits with their produce are receiving those funds.
Now, this is the, one of those days per month would be Lou Ray, the other, as far as the two times a month, that's split between Lou Ray and Shenandoah?
Correct.
Okay, so it'd be six, six days during the year with Lou Ray?
Correct.
Okay, just want to make sure I had that right.
Council, any other questions from Ms. Nelson?
I mean, I think I would be more disposed if like we were able to work out kind of like a match with Shenandoah, or the county, or all three, I mean, that's my main thought.
Not a...
I'm up for, you know, I think having some sort of presence of a farmer's market in town would be nice, I know it's a small step, and I appreciate that y'all have obviously put a lot of effort toward this, and have been here several times, so I think it's worth $2,500, and hopefully they can get the other $2,500.
I agree with that. Yeah, I'd love to see the farmer's market here permanent, and this is going a step in the right direction, so if y'all didn't get the manager, would you still be able to operate, or would that, that would kill it?
It would likely kill it, so through August, there would be some chance, so there's, yeah, there's not much of a chance, there's, through August is kind of a good training period.
Are you charging like a booth fee to people?
Yes, so last year, we were volunteer-based, but it didn't work out too much to get volunteers, so we are charging $15 a day, or $130, which is a $50 discount, and then if people have any need, then they can come to us to have that waived, so.
Okay.
I like that. You have a motion?
You have a motion, Lake?
I will make a motion that we use $2,500 from the AR, ARPA funds to fund the Daughters of the Stars Farmer's Market for the 2023 season.
Second.
Any more discussion?
One question, if, if Lou Ray is the only one to fund this, if Shenandoah did not come through the county, what happens then, would we just, would we just be having it in Lou Ray, or will it not?
That's a good question, so we would continue advancing forward more with the EDA rather than going towards some of the other things that we would need to hopefully try to match that, and likely need to reduce some of the job, there's a job description, and so likely reduce some of the arrangements that the person would have, so in terms of vendor outreach or marketing, so it would just be a reduced amount of hours to work off of lesser funds.
Anybody else? Danielle?
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
All right, Ms. Nelson, congratulations.
Thank you, everyone.
Way forward. All right, howdy, Ms. Elliott?
Since y'all were giving out money this evening, just teasing, good evening, everybody. In your pockets tonight, you're going to see, I have put something in there, I put our accreditation certificate in there, so we are fully accredited for another year. Also attached that you're going to see a transformation strategies workshop that we're going to be hosting here in Lou Ray, July 13th and 14th, there is a sex, a section, a section in there that I will need you folks, if you're available, it is from 2:00 to 2:45. Main Street and the consultants do want to meet with our mayors, they do want to meet with our elected officials, and kind of talk about, you know, our town, you know, what we're doing, the whole vision thing, it's part of the focus group breakout that's going to be a part of this session. Councilman White, I hope you will be in town for those dates, I'm not sure, July 13th and 14th.
And this is separate from the event?
Yeah, this is separate from September, yes, so the trans, these transformation strategy workshops have been something that Virginia Main Street have been doing throughout the years, in my findings, I could not find where we have ever done one of those, so when we did our accreditation, all of our accreditation at the beginning of the year, that was one of the things that I asked for support with, from them, to do one of those workshops, just so that we know, you know, because we are transforming, and we're, and we are evolving, so I thought it would be a great opportunity for us to work together on this, there's a survey that myself and one of my board members is working on in conjunction with Mr. Burke, to put together that we're going to be sending out to the folks, just asking in general questions about how do you feel about your town, that will help us pull some data together in order to put the, a format this, this workshop, so I hope you guys can put that on your calendars and hopefully be able to attend, I think it's going to be really good. I'm traveling to Fredericksburg next Tuesday, the 16th, to a workshop with Virginia Main Street as well, it is going to be on funding, Jennifer Goldman, who is a consultant that I've been working with, with them, is going to be doing a workshop for us on funding strategies, so I'm also looking forward to that, and the cruise in, we are in the process of working on that for July 4th, another special thanks to Mr. Pettit for all of the information he gave me and the contact information, it looks like that that's going to work out really well for us, so I'm excited for that to be another part of our downtown for our July 4th celebration, I'm just going to mention this, and you know, and I need to get all the information too, Mr. Burke, but the VFW and other townspeople have reached out to LDI over a while, and I know they've reached out to the town as well about veterans banners, so our board has met, and we have agreed that we would be willing to work on that project once we get all the logistics worked out, and to see if it's something that we can actually do, but just to make mention of that for something for you to be, just put that kind of on your back burner, and other than that, we're just moving along with business as usual.
Lot of business as usual going on, I mean, there's a lot going on.
Yeah, yeah, and really excited, because I've been having some talks with potential businesses that are looking to come to Lou Ray, and there have been some really interesting businesses that are looking to come, and have been having the opportunity to show some properties, so that's exciting, Councilwoman Lillard Browns, probably next year, that was my last report, but I keep on asking.
Could we like work on the window dressing or something?
Exactly, yeah, get them to do, I don't know, do something, right? Yeah, yeah.
Can you repeat the date for that, the work?
Yes, it is July 13th and 14th. Yeah, and I think you guys are scheduled for the 13th in the afternoon.
Do you have an expected open date for Asian Station?
Every second of my life right now, I mean, we're getting closer, we're getting closer, she, she visited with me last week, and she's like, I'm afraid to even say anything right now, because she really was hoping to be open by the 1st of May, but she's almost there, she's almost at the finish line, and Asian Station?
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, she's almost at the finish line, and it's, I think it looks phenomenal, and I think that they're going to do extremely well, I think they're going to be a nice addition to our Main Street, they're very excited about being a part of Main Street, and that's always a nice thing to hear when you have a new business come in, so we have some really, really good things coming, I am getting questions, and I hope this is the right forum to ask this, and if it's not, shoot me out back later, I've had a few people ask me about our T-Mobile grant, and when we're expecting to see that start, and my curiosity was, do you think it'll happen before evenings on May?
We have ordered the new shade, it will not be delivered before the start.
Gotcha.
And so, we're trying to figure out when it will take, conceptually, it should take a week to put everything in, however, we're trying to figure out if we should wait until after, so that if the week turns into two weeks, we're not having construction during the middle of the...
That makes perfect sense, yeah, okay, great.
It has been ordered, and when we have a delivery date, and when we have a fixed date, we will let everybody know.
Okay, good, 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 because everyone's excited about that as well, you know, because that's really a great new thing that we're going to have for our downtown, so, and I think the hanging baskets will be coming in soon as well, and we'll be getting those put up, so.
Thank you, Jack, if I have any questions?
So you shared that you've had some interest in new businesses coming?
Yes.
Are they just like exploring, or are they pursuing?
They're serious.
Okay, is there anything that we can do as a town, or is there, have you identified, is there any barriers or things that are kind of slowing down the progress for their...
The one that I'm really excited about, it's going to be a matter if, if the property owner can get the work that needs to be done in a timely manner, because they are shooting for an October deadline, and so it's a matter of if they can get, if all the working parts can fit, because I think right now, location is perfect, price is perfect, all of that's perfect, it's just a matter of can they get everything done, if they can get their schedules to work out, but it is a very serious, and they're very interested, and, but, and not at this time, Ms. Lillard, but if I have anything that I, you know, I would definitely reach out.
Can you let the West Main Market folks with the addition to the Bear Garden or whatever?
Right.
That's one of the best things I've seen for tourists coming through town, they see it, they stop, and they love it also.
They stay packed, and El Vesuvio with what they put up in their parking lot has been a great addition, people love outdoor seating, and I mean, that's, they really, really do, and there's just a lot of opportunities right now, you know, and our, and we're busy, I can tell you today, at the visitor's center for a Monday, that bell was dinging about, it sounded, it seemed like every five seconds, I mean, but we had people all day long, a steady stream, and they were wanting to know where to eat, what to do, we're passing through, we just took a day trip, I had a lady say, you know, two ladies, elderly ladies, they were from Harrisonburg, they decided to take a day trip to Lou Ray because they just like our town, and they had been at our 4th of July celebration, and that's the first time they had been to Lou Ray, so that, that was a good, because I always listen to kind of hear, you know, what made you come, what do you want to do, so people are definitely, I mean, they're here, and they're, and I'm glad to see that we're getting more and more things for them to do.
Lot of good things going on.
It is, we are, we should all be very proud of our town.
Anybody else?
Yeah, thank you.
All right, we got a few public hearings, Mr. Burke?
Yes, sir, first public hearing is the public hearing on the FY23-24 budget, the proposed budget for next fiscal year is $13,557,776 comprised of $7,321,174 in the general fund, $1,280,000 from ARPA, $2,498,655 for the water fund, and $2,457,947 for the sewer fund, there's no adjustments to any of our current tax rates in that budget, and we've not received any contact or inquiries from the public.
All right, let's open the public hearing, public hearing is on the 2023-2024 town budget, does anyone here tonight know when to sign up to speak, does anyone here tonight wish to speak on this? And you say, Steve, we've not heard from anyone?
No, sir.
Well, then I think we can close the public hearing, council?
No action tonight, sir.
Oh, just FY, okay.
I would just say thanks to the staff, Danielle, Danielle, Steve, Brian, anybody else that was involved, because reading through these documents, you know, it's, reading budgets is not always the most fun thing in the world, but you really break it down where, you know, with your revenue general fund by category, where it's, I think, even I can understand it pretty easily, so, thank you.
Thanks.
Good job. All right, let's move on, Mr. Burke, public hearing, special use permit 23-07, 210 Allison Drive.
Yes, sir, this will be the first of three public hearings tonight for special use permits on Allison Drive, first one is at 210 Allison Drive, the planning commission did conduct a public hearing at their April 12th meeting, and unanimously recommended approval of special use permit, conditions recommended for consideration are those that council adopted in section, I think it's 519, sorry, 519 lodging house regulations, and then that the guest stay shall not exceed 14 days, and the special use permit shall not transfer upon sale of property, of property or membership composition in the, of the holding company, and we did not receive any comments prior to vote.
All right, let's open the public hearing, anyone here tonight, again, no one signed up, anyone here tonight wish to speak on this? Again, Steve, you say we've gotten no communication from anyone?
No, sir.
All right, hearing nothing, I'll close the public hearing, we do... All right, hearing nothing. I'll close the public hearing. We do need to act on this. Is that correct, Steve?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Need a motion?
Sure, I move that town council approved the special use permit to operate a lodging house at two-ten Allison Drive, tax map number forty-two A seventeen dash one dash eight-zero in the planned neighborhood development zoning district from Sharon Rodriguez with the conditions as presented.
Second.
Counsel, discussion? All right, hearing none. Danielle?
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
All right, special use permit twenty-three dash oh-eight.
Yep. Yes, sir. Uh, basically the same thing as two-ten, but it applies to one-seventy Allison Drive.
I like Groundhog Day hearing.
Yes, sir.
All right. All right. Um, again, anyone here tonight want to speak? Uh, let's open the public hearing. Anyone here tonight want to speak on this matter? And again, Steve, no communication?
No, sir.
All right, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel?
Steve, how many properties on Allison Drive turned into short-term, five or six?
I believe on Allison Drive tonight, we put us at four, and I believe we have one previous at College Drive. So I think there's been five total applications in that subdivision.
This was kind of interesting, um, because at, at least in the, the nature of the request, it's when I'm not living there. So presumably as somebody that works out of town frequently, and we talk about affordable housing, that's another potential angle on it, right? They're able to rent their house out thirty days a, a year or something. That's a big difference.
I really enjoyed the request. I, I'm trying to find it. I don't know if it was this one, but the one that said, please approve this request with all possible haste. I don't know if we, I don't know if we could do that.
All right, anybody else? All right, has been moved in second, has it been moved in second or not?
No.
No, okay.
No.
Want to make a motion?
They cut you off last time. You have to do this one.
I move that the town council approved the special use permit to operate a lodging house at one-seventy Allison Drive, tax map number forty-two A seventeen dash one dash eight-six in the planned neighborhood development zoning district by Edward. What, how do you pronounce Allison?
Dumitrachie.
Dumitrachie, with conditions as presented.
I second that.
Any more discussion? Danielle?
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
All right, another special use permit twenty-three oh-nine, one-fifty-eight Allison Drive. Steve?
Yes, sir. Uh, same verse, same as the second and third. Um, basically, uh, another application, one-fifty-eight Allison Drive, uh, planning commission unanimously recommended approval of the special use permit and the same conditions as the previous. And no one sent in any comments regarding this application.
All right, I'll open the public hearing. Uh, no one signed up to speak. Anyone here want to speak on this matter? Hearing nothing, I will close the public hearing. Counsel?
I mean, I imagine that people will probably look pretty askance because it is kind of strange to have one street with so many, but since it's my understanding that they're marketing these as second homes and that people are going to split their time, then I guess it's something that makes sense. But definitely, I mean, the optimal thing is to have the opposite, but I understand.
I'll make a motion that, uh, the town council approved the special use permit to operate a lodging house at one-fifty-eight Allison Drive, tax map number four-two A seventeen dash one dash eighty-nine in the planned neighborhood development zoning district from Munish Karin and Two K Group LLC with the conditions as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Counsel?
That's all due haste, by the way.
So all due, but it's all due hasty as we can get it. Okay. Danielle?
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
To sue our backups experienced at the Watch and Warren Restaurant located at two East Main Street.
Second.
Discussion? Daniel?
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Hennig?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
I'd just like to say before we leave that, that I know during that time, I was through town quite a bit too at the intersection. And it was weekends, I believe. I think one was even a holiday weekend because I remember seeing town staff there. And I can't remember which holiday it was, but all those guys out dealing with the traffic with that situation too. But anyway, but I think that sends the right messages, the right message to our businesses that do invest in our town. And take a chance on Luray that we're here to, uh, to help them and see that they succeed as well. And I'm sure that's their appreciation of them as well. I certainly hope, but anyway.
I'm just glad the last meeting we approved the money to align the lateral, so why don't you keep doing that? It seemed like a discussion for a while, but it's money well spent in my book.
All right, anybody else? All right, Steve, PPTRA resolution.
Yes, your council's requested to, to consider approval of the twenty twenty-three personal property tax relief eligibility for personal vehicles as follows. For personal vehicles valued at a thousand dollars or less, a hundred percent tax relief eligible. Personal vehicles valued between one thousand and twenty thousand, forty-two point five percent tax relief eligible. Personal use vehicles valued at two, twenty thousand, one or more, forty, uh, forty-two point five percent tax relief eligible for the first twenty thousand dollar value of the vehicle.
I mean, I think it's a no-brainer. We had the discussion last time. It's always something that's on people's minds, those car taxes. So I'm ready to make a motion barring, you know, further discussion. All right, I guess it's barred. I move that town council adopt the twenty twenty-three Personal Property Tax Relief Act eligibility as presented.
Second that.
Any discussion on that? Daniel?
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Hennig?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
All right, Boomfield Trail Sidewalk Project, uh, Mr. Christman.
Mr. Burgamore?
Actually, we have a one more. Uh, general discussion of the garbage collection. Oh, no, I took that back. Didn't make it to the agenda.
Yes, sir.
It's in the packet somewhere.
Yes, sir.
Okay, it's on, okay, it didn't, okay. Uh, well, anyway.
Do I have it?
Oh, it is, okay. I apologize. Um. Council's requested to discuss, uh, the proposed limit of three garbage cans per commercial business. That is included in the FY twenty-three, twenty-four rate and fee schedule. As amended, a business can submit a request for council's consideration of additional cans to meet their refuse needs of their business. Uh, the town attorney has offered an alternative where the town could charge an additional higher fee above, for each can above three. Uh, and wanted to give council the opportunity to, to consider you either option. Uh, if you want to proceed with just the, the three limit and they come back to y'all, that's what we've, what we'll advertise. But if you want us to, uh, simply increase the rate so that they don't have to come back to council, we can also advertise that for your gym meeting.
Steve, how big of a problem is this? How many businesses need more than three cans?
Oh, several.
Several?
Probably twenty.
You say twenty?
I've given this.
Wasn't the discussion about having enough space on the sidewalk for this?
That's some of it, yes, sir.
Yeah, I've, I've given this a lot of thought since you sent out this packet and looking at this. There's a couple of things I just want to share tonight because I even had this thought as a business owner. The, the rollout cans, of course, a business pays about thirty-five percent more per rollout than a resident, okay? Um, often wondered as a business owner, it's, it's the same capacity, it's going in the same truck, it's going to the landfill, it's taking up the same space. It's, it's mixed with residential trash when it gets there and gets weighed. So the tonnage is the same getting there. I guess the town just in the past set a commercial rate and a residential rate. Um, because I don't believe waste management charges us different. The truck doesn't know what can is going into the truck or, or whatever. But anyway, regardless, I can, I can understand that somewhat. But to limit the three, and then if any extras are any, are even going to be at a higher rate than what commercials already paying, which is about, as I said, thirty-five percent more per can. Um, personally, I don't think we're sending the right message to our businesses that are in a situation that they don't have the option. I do agree with, uh, staff's recommendation that if a business has the space and the opportunity to get a dumpster, and it's not just the space, it's the, it's the ability for a truck to get to it. It's a forward load type of situation that, uh, conditions have to be right. Um, I do personally know of a local business that sought that route to get a dumpster and it was delivered. And then the truck had trouble getting to it and the provider actually said, we can no longer provide you dumpster service. So they went that route and were denied. So now their only options roll out. And I don't think we're doing the right thing going down that road. Uh, one thing that I did think about, and I don't know if this would be possible, and understand staff's concerns with on trash day. Yes, you don't want, you don't want a hundred and fifty rollouts sitting on our main street within a two-block, uh, area. But what about this? The town recently had new cans which were a different color. We've got a mix now of black cans and green cans, uh, which got just randomly scattered, I believe. Because I see some residences with black cans and then others with the old traditional green can. But where I'm proposing is waste management is through our town multiple times, multiple days in a week. If commercial was given the option, especially downtown Main Street, let's say our historic district downtown Maine, that there were two pickup dates for them. So where I'm getting at is that they had three rollouts, but they got picked up twice a week. That's the equivalent of six cans. So instead of six cans rolled out on, let's say, a Tuesday, that same business could roll out three cans on a Tuesday. And then three cans again on a Thursday or a Friday, whatever day would be the pickup. Now, the only way I know that we could keep that straight would be if those commercial cans, that waste management, if they would agree, would pick up twice. Somehow they'd have to be a different color can or something to identify this is a, because you wouldn't want, we've got residents and commercial mixed together in this town. You wouldn't want a citizen who's paying for one pickup a month, I mean, a week, rolling their can out twice. You know, so it'd have to be basically a color code deal to where the, the driver with waste management would know that, uh, I mean, I'm just probably, if it's, if it's a blue can, they know it's a commercial can. And if it's within, uh, you know, Bank Street, uh, D Ford, that, that blue can anytime it's out is picked up on a, just randomly throwing things here, is picked up on a, a Monday and a Friday, or a, or a Tuesday and a Friday. But once again, that would only be three cans needed if they produce six cans of trash per week. But what we did by doing two pickups for that commercial, we've eliminated all six cans out there at one time. But, you know, I'm, I'm just trying to see both sides of it. I realize that we've got to keep the town looking good. Uh, trash is part of any town. Uh, uh, we're gonna have to deal with it. But on the flip side too, I also look at this, any business, especially restaurants, but also retail, any business, the more trash you produce, basically, the more successful you are. Uh, if you're only, if you've got one little rollout can that you're putting out and you're a downtown business in Luray, and especially if you're food, you're not going to make it. Because if you only need one or two or three cans per week, um, you're not going to stay alive. Because that business produces more volume of trash than that to, uh, to pay your employees, to pay your taxes, to, uh, to keep the lights on and keep it operating. So anyway, my, my thought tonight and for us just, it's not a proposal or a motion, it's just, could we contact waste management and see if there's a possibility of a commercial pickup just in a small area, you know, um, and I'm thinking mainly historic district, downtown historic district, that, um, would be a two-time-a-week pickup.
We, we can definitely check. The my historic experience with waste management is that they try to balance the days so that the trucks, that they're not filling up the truck and having to make two or multiple trips.
Sure.
Dump. But we can definitely ask them to see if that is something that they would consider.
Right.
And then we can talk with them about what the, we know the businesses that have the multiple cans right now to see how they could, if they could balance out a, a twice-a-week.
Yeah.
Well, that's the thing, you're not even talking about all of them. That wouldn't even have to be all the businesses.
No, no.
It would be the ones that have the excess cans.
It would be the ones that can't get by with just three cans.
Six businesses.
Right. And they'd still pay the per rollout cost per can, but, um, and I realize that, I mean, we're gonna have to, the town's gonna have to pay waste management. So they're gonna have to, if they've got three cans, the price may double. Well, it would have to. The price would double on those three cans if those three cans are picked up.
Twice a week.
Twice a week. So, um, so in reality, their monthly bill would be the same as six cans, but we wouldn't have the street as cluttered.
We, we can definitely ask that. And, and, yes, we can, we can present them with where we know there's multiple cans and see if there's that option.
Okay.
Seven forty-five PM.
Thank you. In case you wanted to know. Any other thoughts? I didn't mean to document that, I'm just.
No, I, I do agree with you, uh, in that I, I don't know, I, I certainly would not be, uh, a proponent for increasing the charge beyond the third container. Because I, I do think it's sending the wrong message and we can't penalize them because they are.
Are successful.
Yeah, that's right.
Anybody else on that? Now, we to Mr. Christman?
Yes, sir.
Boomfield Trail Sidewalk Project?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In your packet is a two-sided sheet. Sorry for the sas, it's a little tough to read on some of the print. I'll give you the Cliff Notes version. It's not worth your time reading. Uh, the, um, it was a great program, a great, uh, concept by the state. In fact, I hope they use it for a lot of their other funding streams because the Ready, Set, Go does give localities with smaller budgets the opportunity to, uh, get a jump start on some of their project planning. Unfortunately, what we found out, at least in the Stanton District, is that nearly all the projects came in at astronomical numbers. Um, the entire program amount for the Stanton District was two million dollars and this one-third of one, of one of our projects was two point five, not including inflation. So not sure they got to where they wanted to be with the Ready, Set, Go planning program. But, uh, the second half of this would be for the town to submit a transportation alternative, um, project grant, a TAP grant, which is federal funds. It's eighty percent federal money, twenty percent town money. And looking at the breakdown, our local match for this particular estimate would be over a half million dollars. I think we can do better than that. And so I would not recommend the council pursue a TAP, uh, application for this project, uh, given this project breakdown and this estimate. Um, since this was a first-time program and the town did get funding for this, which didn't cost us anything, which I'm glad because I would have asked for my money back if, if we'd gotten this. Um, the, because we didn't know what we were gonna need, we did include us, um, about forty thousand dollars in engineering and, um, site prep work in the upcoming FY twenty-twenty-four budget. So one of the things I was gonna ask council to think about, you don't have to decide tonight, would be if we break this third of a project. So again, this is a, a project that basically runs a, a pathway uh, from the first street intersection with Luray, out Luray Avenue to Sixth, and then down Sixth to the rec park. So.
Starts at First Avenue, you said?
Mm-hmm, right there near the traffic circle. We, we have sidewalk to that point. We just need to take off from there and continue on out. So this project was a partial substitution for the Greenway extension to that on the south end of town. But it was also a safer out-to-school component. It was also part of a bigger plan that's in our comp plan. This was just phase one. Phase two is Third from Luray all the way to the East Luray Shopping Center. And the third piece was Ninth from Village Place, where we have a lot of folks that walk to Third. So what it would do would be connect Third, basically splits the Boomfield in half. So people from both sides of the neighborhood could use this pedestrian corridor and either travel to the schools, travel to the rec park, travel to the shopping center, or they could come back and forth from Village Place. So it was a long-range plan for pedestrian improvements in the Boomfield area of, of the town. That's why it's in the comp plan, you know, because it's a long-range vision. So one of the things that we could consider to do is next fiscal year, utilize those funds to go ahead and complete the engineering component, complete the site visit component, complete the other, um, site prep requirements that we would need. And then one of the things that we could ask council to consider in, in previous and following budget cycles is if we take each one of these pieces and break it into about thirds, where we're not working past nine thousand square feet of disturbance, because ten thousand square feet is the magic number. So if we break this nine-block project that's listed on the sheet into three pieces, we could feasibly budget funds over the next three budget cycles, not counting twenty-twenty-four, and do this project in-house. The, the amount of money would be fairly low. After the first budget cycle, we'd have a really good grasp on what that thing would exactly cost. Uh, and then we could manage it using local labor, local resources, um, not have the federal oversight, not have the federal strings that are attached to that eighty percent money, because that's significant. Reporting alone is significant with federal fu- federal funding. So there are, there is another option that we could potentially do, and we could do it locally. Um, I think we'd definitely end up with a much lower number than this. In fact, the two estimates that I've gotten independently show that we could probably build this entire three, uh, nine blocks for less than our twenty percent match.
First Street?
Yeah.
Uh, the whole project?
Yeah.
Well, let me ask you, Mr. Brian, what's the logic in this eight, ten-foot width?
Okay, so the ten-foot width is a greenway trail and it's considered a multimodal trail under the state's criteria. So if you do a multimodal path system such as the greenway, which is ten feet wide, then you can have pedestrians and cyclists use this ten-way pa- uh, this ten-foot wide path concurrently. If you're less than ten feet, you're basically considered a glorified sidewalk. And then when you have pedestrians, ADA accessibility, and bikes together, it's a recipe kind of for disaster. And so the, the state and the feds really don't recognize that.
Well, my concern with this on those widths, when I read this, um, Chief here, I think, can attest to it. There's no curb and gutter with this, correct?
Correct.
So we're talking about a, a street,
Mm-hmm.
a grass barrier, and then a ten-foot strip of pavement. We've had cars get on our greenway before.
Yeah.
Uh, with GPS and out of town, not know where they're going and they're, they're driving on our greenway. You put something ten-foot wide beside Luray Avenue.
Mm-hmm.
My concern would be the, the bigger danger is pedestrian getting hit by a vehicle that's on the walking path that's ten-foot wide asphalt.
Yeah.
That got off the street.
Can't, can't say that that would not happen, given our experiences here locally over the past few decades. Um, it, it should not happen. Uh, they're clearly going to be marked pedestrian facilities with center striping signs, crosswalks, the whole nine yards, the little bollards that they potentially just run right over. But yes, that is a concern. Um.
And especially without curb and gutter.
Yeah.
E- e- you know, even if there's bollards or whatever, because
Correct.
I believe there, they've even hopped curb and gutter.
Even where we have curb and gutter on the greenway, we've had cars on the greenway. So, uh, it, it, it definitely happens.
Isn't the whole idea, is so that maybe now we have kids bike to the park, not on the streets?
Correct.
It's, I think it'd be a whole lot safer than what we have now.
Well, they're using these corridors now. They're walking across these people's driveways, they're walking in the grass, they're walking to and from, they're biking to and from.
Right.
Unfortunately, they like to bike in on the hard surface rather than through the gravels. So that puts them in the travelway with the vehicles, and there's the conflict point. So I, I think overall, you know, the three-part process, if we break each of the three phases, and if we see that this works out, you know, gr- granted, if we do the engineering plans and we come back and I see a lot of red flags there, I'm gonna be the first to tell you guys, hey, we maybe want to change this design just a little bit. We want to do something a little different here. Um, to Jason's point, I'm not sure that we could build anything except if it was inside of a steel cage that would keep some of our motorists off of these travelways. I, I just don't, I, I don't know whether it's possible. You know, we, we've had them go through and over barricades, up and over cer- curb and gutter, um, a variety of places. And so I think, but in terms of this project, I would not recommend we pursue the TAP grant. It's just too much money. And I think that, uh, you know, between right now and current day dollars, somewhere between three seventy-five and four twenty-five, we should be able to build that entire thing. Uh, and pay it.
How much is that again?
Three twenty-five to four seventy-five.
All the way down from First Street?
I mean, three seventy-five to four twenty-five.
From rec, from rec park?
From First Street all the way to the rec park. Now, we would go in the gate right there, uh, where the house is. There's a gate there and there's only a short segment down to the Fitness Trail. And so that would be where we would have a pedestrian gate there. My only concern about going all the way to the main gate is things get really narrow and really steep and the, the grade gets funky in there. And so I'm a little concerned about that. And it's kind of a choke point for vehicle or traffic anyway. And so I'd rather kind of separate the pet, traffic from the, the vehicles if at all possible. So we could use a separate entrance for that.
I remember back when we wanted to do the greenway and there was acquisition of land that stopped it.
Correct.
Is, is there, you, you're gonna take some people's property for some of these, aren't you?
We own all this.
You own everything.
Luray Avenue is one hundred feet wide right away.
Good, okay.
Uh, Sixth is sixty-five feet wide. So we'd be in town right away all the time, which that's another reason. So I asked, uh, friends of mine, uh, for the breakdown on that number, because I wanted to see exactly how they got that number. Didn't put that in the pack for a reason, because it's kind of absurd. And didn't want to put that out there because the consultant's name's on that. So anyhow, um, just something for you guys to think about. We already have the initial jumpstart money plan for FY twenty-twenty-four. Uh, if we find out it's a decent plan and we think we can do it and get some firm local estimating, um, and if it looks like an option, then I'll come back to you folks and say, hey, I think for FY twenty-five, we should maybe consider doing one-third of this project and, uh, see how it goes. And if it works out well, then we maybe consider phase two, you know, step two the next year, and then so on and so forth.
What's the total foot, feet, how many total feet is it again?
About twenty-seven, yeah, thirty-two hundred all the way to rec park.
You think you can do a thousand for a fat fat?
We, we need to do nine hundred feet at a time. Um, if I get over nine hundred feet at a time at ten-foot wide, I'm more than ten thousand square foot on my ANS. And then my plan gets really expensive. I have to have an engineer design. Things tend to escalate. So I'd, I'd like to keep it, if we're able to do it smaller, figure out what the deal is first in, uh, baby steps. And then if it's something we think we can afford and it turns out okay, uh, we move forward. But I would not recommend this.
How many residences would it actually, I, I know it's right away, but still, if you got, you've been using this yard for the past twenty years and now
Yeah.
twelve feet of it's gone. So do we know how many total homes? I, I see twelve gra- uh, gravel driveways would be disturbed.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we pave right through their driveway, give them a pave, free section of pavement.
A little will.
Yeah, so there'd be a little bit of some, for the folks that have all-street parking there, we would try to replace that in kind. Uh, I sent out fifty-three letters. I got two calls.
That's, that's, that's helpful.
Yeah, I, I went, I reached out to every single property owner along the entire route.
And then what about snow removal? So if you have a hundred-foot frontage
Mm-hmm.
and now all of a sudden you got a ten-by-one hundred, or you got a thousand square feet of shoveling, is that how that would work?
Well, basically, what you, what you're gonna have actually is if, if we clean up the snow on this trail like we do some of the others that we do on the greenway, your stuff gets done about the time the streets get done. And you gets, you'll get some extra little help there in front of your house, whereas the neighbors who don't have this in front of their house will get that help.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks.
Another thought too, Brian, is, and tying this in with our water meters.
Mm-hmm.
Are, are some of these, because the boom is as old as it is,
Yeah.
even though it's right, I'm assuming, are some of the water meters actually out in the right-of-way?
They're, they're back, most of them, there are two that Lenny and I identified in that section. Now, there might be more than that. That's two that we could just see, the one we walked in. Most of them are right back against the property lines. So they're all the way at the edge.
I know, I know, we're gonna be doing replacements anyway.
Yeah.
But I was just thinking about coordinating the, the meter issue with this issue if, if stuff was out.
Correct.
I got this, the snow removal question, uh, triggers. If we do the ten feet width, then it is a trail.
Mm-hmm.
And it's our responsibility.
Yeah.
If it's ten-foot, it's simply a sidewalk and it's the property owner's responsibility.
So you're looking at not only cost of materials to build it, but also the cost of, uh,
Mm-hmm.
maintenance or responsibility.
Yep.
On, uh.
It'll be a piece of public infrastructure just like a street.
Wow.
Something we should, yeah, we should consider.
So anything we build, we'll have to maintain.
The, the, the good news is, and Jennifer's been working towards this, the equipment that she is purchasing to do the, um, field maintenance does have a plowed hatch. So then that will allow whoever is operating from D Park to use that piece of equipment to run up the trail up to First Street along. So, um, Jennifer's aware of this project and I think she's building towards that.
Would that qualify for maintenance funds or would not?
Trail, trailways for pedestrian, if, if the state approves the, is a pedestrian resource, it will, it will, it will apply, maintenance funds will apply after it's built.
Yeah, okay, that's, that's more what I'm asking.
But we have to pay to build it first, just like a street extension.
Would it qualify for maintenance funds to care for?
For maintenance, down the road.
Sidewalk or trail?
Mm-hmm.
Or just sidewalk?
Yeah, we can replace any trail, any trail or, or sidewalk that's approved by the state. So I would get a courtesy review of these plans. I'd be part of the deal to get Stanton District to say, yeah, this looks like a great idea.
I think it's a great idea. Wish you'd start tomorrow.
Yeah, I wish we could. And we will. We'll start July one, as soon as the funds are ready. We'll churn it out. We're, we're most of the way there. I mean, we have the broad strokes. We know where we need to go. But yeah, as far as this thing goes, I would not recommend we pursue that. That's just a lot of money.
Do you still have the program where you're trying to get rid of the hotspots that are not ADA compliant?
Yep.
You're still hitting all those, aren't you?
Plowing through them. Yep. So we're finished, uh, West Main's done. Um, the Roundabout took care of a few of those. Uh, we're getting ready, I'm getting ready to walk Thursday for North Oxford Street, both sides, all the way down. Um, we need to do some work on the end of South Court Street. We have a few more spots on Highland Court. So if you want to see updates on that listing, uh, it's on the town website. It's under Sidewalk, um, Improvement Project. It's on the main webpage and you can kind of see what we've been doing and where we've been doing it and as we work our way through the list. Um, we've been trying to keep up to date with that, but improving access in an older right-of-way with not much room has been a challenge. Um, but it, uh, if we can meet ninety percent of the standard, most of the places, we're providing much better access than what was there before. But yes, Ron, we are continuing that every single year. Yeah. So this will just be another.
Coming back complaining they can't get off the sidewalk.
Right. And, you know, reaching out to those folks, and we did have two folks that lived, uh, one on Massanut, and, uh, two of them lived in Village Place, uh, went out, worked with them, said, where are your problems? Where do you have problems getting into town? So we fix those first. So thankfully, we've had pretty good relationship.
Going into the shopping plaza.
Yeah, well, they, and that crosswalk's sitting there too, waiting, because it's at the end of Third. So it's waiting for the continuation, phase two of this project right here. But again, this is a ten-year deal. I don't touch anything. It's less than ten years, it seems like. So anyway, thank you for your time. That's what we'll do. I will not proceed with that application. We'll see how we fare moving forward.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Appreciate your guidance on that one.
Mr. Botkins, you have anything for us?
Yes, sir.
All right, any council comments? Anybody, anything to bring up? All right, I want to congratulate Stephanie and Alex for being selected for the Virginia Rural Leadership Institute. Make it proud, I'm sure you will. Uh, we've been invited to the Stanley Homecoming Parade, five PM Saturday, July first. Parade is at five again. Reception is three to four thirty to meet the statewide officials and dignitaries. Mr. Vickers, I assume you're putting that on your calendar right now?
I'm trying to write it down. What day is it? July one, right?
July one, yeah. Three to four thirty to meet Ms. Virginia.
Yeah, well, of course.
Um, you all got your invitation to the, um, was that a luncheon on the thirty-first? I didn't get one. I guess we're invited. Did you get one, Al? They only, I only got six of them, I'm sure. I'm sure we're included, aren't we? The, uh, our, um.
Oh, VTG?
Yeah. No, 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 the, um.
Oh, no. There you go.
Yeah, thank you.
I think that's what you're talking about. Yeah.
Yeah, the, the, um. Yeah, the V, VTG, Vision, Vision Technology Group, so.
Yeah, if, if you're interested in attending, please let Danielle RS, let her RSVP.
Uh, you can put me down for one. Um, let's see. Chamber Bank, what have we doing on that? Uh, we got any RSVPs, Danielle, or still waiting?
Everyone that has, um, let me know that they do want to attend. I have submitted their RSVP. Um, if anyone else has changed their mind and still would like to attend, just let me know and I'll, we guys pass that along to the chamber.
Uh, don't forget to hang around for pictures and we have a, uh, some cookies provided by the Stanley Fire Department and the Boy Scouts. We can snack on. All right, that's all I have. Meeting adjourned.
It was a hard smack tonight.